Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The City of Peabody zoning board of appeals meets tonight remotely in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty A and Governor Baker's March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a participation platform called Zoom. Tonight's hearing will be conducted in the following manner. Excuse me. The secretary will read the legal notices. The chairwoman will invite the applicant or applicant's representative to present to the board. The chair may limit the length of remarks. All parties will be given an opportunity to speak in favor or in opposition and must keep to the subject. The board may receive similar written communications to be placed on the public record. Let me just stop here for a minute. It looks like we have a lot of people tonight that are going to speak. If you are going to use the raise hand feature, please press star nine on the telephone, on your telephone. The other thing is, excuse me. So if we have eight, nine, ten people speaking on one issue and the first five people have said everything there is to say in favor or in opposition, let's just say in opposition. When people six, seven, eight, nine, and ten come up, please don't repeat what's already been said. You can give your name and address for the record and say that I agree with all the neighbors that came before me. That would be greatly appreciated. If, if, in fact, I've never had to do this, but if in fact you're repeating and repeating and repeating, I'll have to cut in. My goodness, I'll have to cut in and ask you to to just stop, you know, I I could tell you what other zoning board people do in times like that, but I'm not going to, and it's extremely rude and I won't do that. So I'll let you guess what it is. So let's continue. Okay. The chair will ask those who would like to speak either in favor or against to use the raise hand feature. Once again, star nine on your phone. Those calling in will be asked if they would like to speak on the matter. Anyone with their hand raised will be called upon. I will ask you to unmute and speak on the matter at hand. You must first, everybody state your name and address and identify if you are in favor or in opposition to the applicant's proposal. The applicant will be afforded time to answer any of the questions posed. Once all questions by abutters and board members are answered, the board will vote. Chair will ask for a roll call vote. Chair will reiterate the outcome. The applicant may log off and will receive an email with instructions on Tuesday. Chair will move on to the next agenda item and reserves the right to change the order of the agenda as she sees necessary and this evening I see necessary. Tonight, we are pushing number six up to number three. So the order will go one, two, six, three, four, five. Please be prepared to present at any time during the proceedings. And with that, we offer number one on the agenda this evening. It's a continued application of forty eight Oak Street. That is the forty B comprehensive permit. I need a motion to accept the continuance and then I'm going to need a motion to continue. And while that's happening, I would like everyone to look on their calendar from March eighth. This application has been continued quite a bit. We are going to allow that to continue to give them all, all parties involved as much time as they want. But instead of continuing month after month after month, I figured let's continue this until March eighth and hopefully by then all parties involved will have everything done and completed and we can hear the rest of it March eighth. So I need a motion to accept this continuance from forty Oak Street.
Motion to accept the continuance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I need them, okay, so before we have a motion on March eighth, is everybody okay with that?
I'm not going to be in the state.
You're not going to be in the state?
I will not be in the state.
Okay, so let's look at another date.
Well, what if we're still zooming? Does he need to be in the state?
Oh, well, what do you think about that, Stephen?
I think it's not going to be possible. That way there.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, no, I thought about it, but it just unfortunately won't work.
Okay. So March fifteenth is our regularly scheduled program. How about March twenty second?
That works.
Everybody? Okay, that gives, that gives them a little extra time. So I need a motion to continue the application of forty Oak Street to March twenty second.
Motion to continue to March twenty second, twenty twenty one.
I need a second. All in favor, Barry, you okay with that?
Aye.
All in favor? Okay, great. So that's taken care of. Um, okay, we have the number two of the continued. We have a continued application of the residents of Farm Ave. Before we do that, I need a motion to accept the late correspondence that you all will be getting in the mail tomorrow. So it was late, it was given to us on Friday. You know, we can't accept or hear the late correspondence at this time, but we need a motion to accept it. Could I have that, please?
Motion to accept correspondence.
Second.
All in favor? Yes, good. Oh, Julie, I'm sorry, you can't, she can second. Yeah. So now we're going to hear a brief overview from the Panos Law Group and Hayes Engineering, I believe. And after that, we're going to need a motion to continue. Look on your schedules as you're listening. I'm going to try to have this one continued to hear this presentation and hopefully everything else in depth on February twenty second. Dan, are you okay with that? We have questions. Everybody looks perplexed.
We have a meeting scheduled for that day, don't we, the regular meeting?
Oh, yes, that's right, it is, it is going to be, we are going to incorporate it, I'm sorry, we are going to incorporate it for that.
Fine with me.
Jason, do you need a shared screen? Can't hear you. I was just gonna do something that would have gotten me in a lot of trouble.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Awesome. Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair. My name is Jason Panos. For the record, practicing law at two four six Andover Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. I'm here with Tony Capachetti from Hayes Engineering and Michael Weiss, the project proponent. We are all socially distanced and we appreciate that you've accepted our late correspondence and appreciate that you need time to review the, the volumes of material that were sent to you, but I figure we'd take an opportunity to maybe do a project status update where we are because we've had a couple of continuances and maybe give a very, very, very brief presentation and bullet points so that we could frame what it is you're, you're about to receive and review. With your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to proceed. Um, so last we left you, which was, I want to say back in October, we had a number of comments that resulted from peer review and I'm happy to say that peer review in this case has worked the way it's intended to work. It's vetted the project and for the most part, the technical aspects of the project that were presented in our application have passed that vetting that they've, they've been reviewed by the technical experts hired by the city, paid for by the applicant. And I'm happy to say we have a fairly solid project with literally less than a handful of outstanding items to, to, that, that, that we're kind of hanging. Those items relate to, not in any particular order, water connection, stormwater connection and pedestrian traffic. And I'll take the easiest first, the pedestrian traffic issue. I believe we've pretty much resolved that we will agree to disagree with the, with the DPS assessment that we need. Sidewalks on the drive, that is the drive leading from the project site to Farm Avenue. And the reason why we will not accommodate that request is that those sidewalks would go to nowhere. There are no sidewalks for a mile of the side along Farm Avenue and they would serve no purpose. So rather than just saying absolutely no, what we propose is a contribution of eighteen thousand dollars to the city sidewalk fund for your consideration and the city can spend that eighteen thousand dollars anywhere it deems fit for other sidewalk improvements offsite. You know, wherever it, it, it would like to spend that money. Very quickly, on the water connection issue, there was a disconnect between Weston and Sampson and, and our data. And Tony Capachetti will talk about that in a little more detail, but we are confident that once that is vetted, once again, and concluded that Weston and Sampson will, we believe, agree with our assessment and our connection proposal, but I don't want to put words in their mouth. And the big open issue is wastewater. Unfortunately, Ty and Bond, the city's engineer on that matter really didn't review any of the application materials and made a conclusion despite it. And we believe that we're owed a little more for the eighty two hundred dollars that we spent to have them review the application, which they did not do. So we certainly believe that a continuance to February twenty second allows more than enough time to conclude those three outstanding issues and perhaps even close, recommend closing the hearing and moving toward the decision phase of the, of the matter. And with, with the permission of the chair and through you to the rest of the board, we'd like to make that bullet pointed technical review of what you're about to receive and if you have any questions, happy to answer them. Tony?
All right, thank you, Wash. Tony Capachetti, Hayes Engineering, six oh three Salem Street, Wakefield, Mass. For the record, as Jason said.
Excuse me, could you talk a little louder?
Sorry, I'll just move the mic over here, sorry about that. So as Jason said, the four areas of peer review were traffic, stormwater, water connection and wastewater supply. There were three points, three main areas of concern under the traffic peer review. The first being the lack of sidewalks on the site driveway. That was brought up by DPS and Jason explained our, our anticipated solution for that. Again, the nearest sidewalks to the south are at the intersection of Deable and Intercontinental and Farm Ave. And then to the northwest out on Route one at the intersection of Forest and then to the northeast down Forest, very close to the intersection of one twenty eight. So constructing six hundred feet of sidewalk on our site wouldn't serve much purpose other than to get people out to an area where there's no sidewalks. We feel that there's probably more pedestrian traffic areas in the city that could use the, the funding. The next one was intersection site distance for the existing site driveway. That's what you can see from the site driveway for approaching vehicles. For a thirty mile per hour posted limit, it's two hundred and ninety feet. We have in excess of that, we revised the plans to show that and we're amenable to any condition about maintaining vegetation within those site distance triangles. And then there was questions about the assumptions on turning distributions. How, how many people would turn left out of our site drive versus turning right? And to basically make it simple, we ran our analysis and said, okay, well, what if a hundred percent of the people turn left? Because that was the critical concern. And that changed, that did not change the level of service at the intersection down at Intercontinental Way and Farm Ave. So basically, any assumption between our original one and a hundred percent would work. No, I don't have to just appear on there. Stormwater, Horsley and Witten made some comments. They were all pretty minor. After walking the site, we resolved a lot of them. The one big comment was that, I guess, site, some site exploration was done on the abutting parcel at twenty five Farm Avenue and DPS and Horsley and Witten witnessing the test holes discovered a large amount of trash and solid waste. So they asked our LSP to review his site assessment, which he did. And the site is under disturb other than the recent construction that we performed and the, the twenty one E that was filed is still valid. And that was submitted to Horsley and Witten and yourself. Underwater for wastewater. Weston and Sampson looked at two different models. They said we had either eighteen hundred gallons per minute available under the current condition and there's some contemplated changes to the high service zone, which would make fifteen hundred gallons per minute available for firefighting. They estimated the needed fire flow for the building at between two thousand and twenty five hundred gallons per minute, which we thought was kind of excessive. So we hired a MEP fire protection engineer to run the analysis. That's what they do. They came back with the needed fire flow for a fully sprinkled building, which is what we are, NFPA thirteen compliant system, would only be seven hundred and fifty gallons per minute and that's the sum of the the flow at the rise up to the sprinkler system plus the hose allowance. So five hundred plus two fifty gave us seven hundred and fifty gallons per minute. So we're nearly twice that in the worst case scenario. And then they questioned about the pressure. We've always contended that under the existing configuration, there is low pressure out there. To get pressures above thirty five PSI in the fourth and fifth floor, we would need a booster pump. The system, the, the project's been designed intending to have that booster pump, so we just made it clear to them. The last one was wastewater, as Jason said. We'd like to tie into the existing force main that runs in front of our site. That's what DPS ties into for their wastewater. We feel that if it's available for the municipality to use, it should be available for us to use. No assessment of that connection or additional information was provided. The recommendation we got back was to tie in about eighteen hundred feet away from the site, further down Forest Street, closer to Route one and to construct a parallel force main for our site to that extent. That would add about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in construction costs, which really starts to make the profit margins quite, quite difficult on this, possibly uneconomical. So we'd like to continue working with DPS to, to resolve that situation and hopefully tie into that existing force main that handles the leachate line. We think with onsite storage, pump design and knowing what they have for pumping, we should be able to come up with a design that, that will work in synchronous form with the existing force. So I tried to be brief, I know I went fast. You'll have about three hundred pages of documents coming your way, so you, you'll get to really go into it in depth. So I thank you for your time.
That was great. Thank you. We don't have any questions, do we, at this point? We have a lot to look over that you'll get in the mail. But I do need a, a motion to continue this till February twenty second. Jason, you're all set with that?
Fine with that, Madam Chair. I can work through Kurt to maybe talk about the proposed agenda for that, that meeting and what we intend to accomplish.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to continue to February twenty second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. We'll see you next month.
Yes, thank you.
Couple of months.
Two months.
Yes. Okay, now we are going out of order like I stated. So right now, we're going to have our secretary read number six, which is a application, Exordium Capital LLC, care of attorney, Ethan Von Zalitis.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing via Zoom remote participation on Monday, December fourteenth at seven PM, application of Exordium Capital LLC, care of attorney Ethan Von Zalitis. Ver variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance twenty nineteen is amended section seven two nine three as it applies to the premises known as eighty five to eighty seven Molle Street, Peabody, map eighty four, lot one seventy and map eighty five lot two thirty nine A. petitioner seeks a variance to construct nine apartments in the interior of existing building and requires relief to the lot area where forty five thousand three hundred eleven square feet is required and thirty two thousand five hundred sixty one square feet is proposed. Front yard setback for twenty feet is required and seventeen point four feet is proposed. Rear yard setback where thirty five feet is required and thirty four point eight feet is proposed. Driveway coverage with fifteen percent coverage allowed and twenty four point five percent is proposed. Properties located in our four multi-family zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed by contacting Carl McGrath or carlo@mcgrath@peabodymass.gov or nine seven eight five three eight five seven nine two in advance and prior to public hearing, the agenda for this meeting and instructions on how to access the remote participation platform are posted on the City of Peabody website.
Through the chair before we begin.
Excuse me?
I said through the chair before we begin.
You have to recuse yourself?
I have to accuse myself from this one, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Colbert, looks like you get to vote on this one. Attorney Von Zalitis, you're on.
Can you hear me? Okay. All right. For the record and good evening, I'm Ethan Von Zalitis. I'm an attorney practicing law at two forty six Andover Street in Peabody and I am here on behalf of the applicant with respect to this evening's variance application. I believe that all the board members are very familiar with our property. The building was formerly occupied by the American Red Cross. It's a two-story building. It was originally constructed in nineteen sixty eight, which is basically over fifty two years ago. This building consists of three floors. It contains approximately eleven thousand and a hundred and six square feet of area. We're situated on thirty two thousand five hundred sixty one square feet of land and our property is in the F four, a multi-family resident zoning district. This building has been vacant now for approximately a year and a half. It has been on the, on the market for sale. However, due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, as you probably already know, there's very little demand for office space as all the businesses have become accustomed to having their employees working from home. However, the demand for housing still continues to rise. The applicant is a real estate development company. They do have a property under a purchase and sales agreement. Obviously, our obligation to purchase is contingent upon obtaining the required variance. With respect to our application, the applicant desires to perform a total renovation to the building by converting it into a small, upper scale apartment complex that would contain nine apartments. There would be four apartments on the lower level, would have four apartments on the first floor. You would have one apartment on the second floor. Eight of these apartments would be two bedroom apartments and obviously the last would be a one bedroom. Each apartment's going to contain, contain an average, I'd say, of between eight hundred to thirteen hundred square feet of living area. And each apartment's going to contain a kitchen, a living room, either a one or two bedrooms, one full bath, refrigerator, stove, dishwasher, microwave oven. And each unit will have its own washing machine and dryer. In addition, every apartment's going to have its own heating and air conditioning system. We do want to provide some amenities within the building. The amenities within the building will include an approximately four hundred square foot gym and workout area and an approximately about four hundred and fifty square foot business center and conference room. In addition, the building's going to have a video monitoring doorbell at its main entrance. And each apartment is going to be provided with an approximately five foot by eight foot storage unit so the tenants can use this for the storage of any of their excess personal property or maybe any seasonal property. Granted, the requested variance, the entire interior of the building will be gutted. It will then be totally renovated with the installation of all new floors, new ceilings, walls, light fixtures, hallways, kitchens, bathrooms, bedrooms and all the other improvements that you find with residential development. The applicant's going to also bring the electrical and the plumbing utilities up to today's building codes and standards. They're going to provide a sprinkler protection system throughout the entire building and obviously they'll be providing a modern fire alarm system. The exterior of the building's going to be painted along with installing all new residential style windows. Our parking area is going to be repaved and all new landscaping is going to be installed and that landscape will be done in a full conformance with our current landscaping requirements. If this variance is granted, the applicant's going to be investing approximately two and a half million dollars into the property in order to create a, a modern residential building that's going to conform to all today's building and fire codes and standards. It is interesting to note that prior to two thousand and eleven, the applicant could have constructed this project without any variance relief as the area requirement back then was thirty thousand square feet or seven hundred and fifty square feet per bedroom, whichever is greater. However, our zoning ordinance was amended in two thousand and eleven and now requires thirty thousand square feet plus seven hundred and fifty square feet per bedroom. In addition, it wasn't until two thousand and thirteen that our zoning ordinance was further amended concerning driveways not covering more than fifteen percent of the lot. As a result, you know, this additional seven hundred and fifty square foot requirement along with the driveway requirement today would allow this building only to contain three apartments. This creates a substantial hardship to anybody that's proposing a residential use to this already developed property. I personally believe that the applicant's proposal is an excellent use of the property. It abuts the Crown and Shield apartment complex along with having other multiple family dwellings in close proximity. It will also result in a substantial investment near our downtown area, which we've been, which we've been trying to do for years now. It's going to provide additional needed housing. The property is an easy and walking distance to many of the surrounding restaurants and personal service establishments and the other retail stores that are situated in our downtown area. And as I did state earlier, we will be installing all the landscaping in conformance with today's landscaping requirements. We're going to actually be reducing the existing paved driveway area by eliminating the curb cut on Sawyer Street and replacing that with landscaping. We're also going to be well below the maximum lot coverage that's allowed in the zoning district. And we're also going to be providing more than the required parking spaces. Basically, this proposal doesn't Basically, this proposal doesn't require any additions to the existing building. The front yard setback, rear yard setback, existing parking area, they're all existing. This is the way it's been for over fifty-two years. I do have with me this evening, Mr. Rob Christie. He happens to be the manager of the Exordium Capital LLC. And together, we'll try to answer any questions that either the board or the public may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan. Any questions by the board at this point? Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak? If you do, the raised hand feature is star nine if you're on a telephone. Ann Manning? Or Mary Ellen Manning?
Yeah, it's Mary Ellen Manning. Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
Is it appropriate to... I own eighty Lowell Street, which is a directed butter right across the street. You're all at parcel eighty-five, two thirty-nine A, and I'm across the street at oh eighty-five, two fifty-eight. So my property is a four-family. So is it appropriate to ask some questions? Because, you know, I don't have any objection to what I'm hearing so far, but I did have some questions. Is that appropriate?
Yeah, you can add... Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I understand that the building... Thank you. I appreciate that. I understand that the building is going to be on the same footprint. Are they going to keep the handicap access ramp on the left-hand side of the building? Is this going to remain handicap accessible?
Should we answer that? Rob, are you on? Rob?
Yeah, one second. Okay.
Hi, Rob Christie. Sixteen Meadow Lane, Salem, New Hampshire. In regards to the handicap ramp, at this point, that's likely going to stay. We still have to get into the morbid design of the exterior of that.
Okay. Thank you. And how many cars are going to be in the lot? What's the plan?
We're required to provide eighteen parking spaces, but we're providing twenty-one.
Okay, so the extra three spots would be like designated visitors or something like that?
Really, there isn't a visitor requirement because we're subject to the inclusionary zoning. So I'm not sure how we're going to, you know, number our parking spaces. I'm not sure.
Okay, so that brings me to the next problem because parking is a major issue. There's a street... There's one parking spot in front of my house. It's between Perkins Street and Lowell Street. And if people park in that spot, nobody can take a turn out of our driveway. So when I hear that you're going to... I'm assuming you're not going to put the curb cut in on Sawyer Street.
We're taking that out. We're just going to use Lowell Street.
Right. Yeah, so my issue would be that all the traffic is going to turn onto Lowell Street, and I don't think that's a good idea for traffic purposes. I think that... I don't have any problem with the building. I don't have any problem with the number of people or the number of cars, but I do think that you need to keep that extra exit out onto Sawyer Street. Now, if the reason you're not putting that curb cut in there is because you need it for more parking, you know, that might be the trade-off. But what's going to end up happening is all of your people are going to park in front of our house, and that's going to be a major problem on Lowell Street.
I don't see how this is... Turning your house, we're providing more parking than our zoning ordinance is even requiring. I mean, we're only nine units.
Okay. I understand what you're saying. I just think that you need that cut on Sawyer Street.
If each unit has two cars, we still have extra parking.
Right, but everybody's going to have to enter your parking lot from Lowell Street as opposed to having the option of coming down and having deliveries and things like that come through Sawyer Street. Lowell Street is a very congested street. I'm just, you know, saying that, as I said, I don't have any problem with your plan. I do have a problem with the traffic portion of it.
Again, this proposal is also appearing before the PBD planning board through our site plan review.
Okay.
You know, they may bring that issue up, or they may like the fact that we've gotten rid of a curb cut.
Right.
Traditionally, they do like, you know, less curb cuts. But, you know, that's something we can go through with the planning board.
Okay, so maybe there's public comment for that then. So maybe these other things that I had that I was going to ask about aren't really appropriate for this board either. I'm assuming you're going to keep a dumpster for trash then, right?
Correct. We have two of them, and they're all enclosed on concrete plates.
And then the only other... The only other issue that I had was the lighting in that... Where the lot is now, there is some lighting there that casts over from the seven-eleven, which is beneficial. But that particular lot with all those people living... Nobody lives there at night now in that lot. You know, it's kind of a vacant lot because it's a business that isn't running at night. But with people there, I do think that the city needs to put more lighting over on that corner to make it safer for the people who live there. But again, as you pointed out earlier...
We don't have anything to do with lighting either.
You don't have anything to do with that. So then, you know, I'm happy that you want to make good use of the building. I'm glad that you're not going to change the exterior of it. And the rest of my comments have to do with, you know, things that are exterior to the building. So I'm in favor of your project. I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody else that would like to speak on this matter from the audience? Anybody? Doesn't seem so. What about the board? Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, the matter's before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Dan.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Ed.
Yes.
Fran.
Yes. This has been approved. You'll hear from Carla tomorrow. Thank you, Ethan. Feel better.
Thank you very much. I hope you guys have a great Merry Christmas and a happy and healthy New Year.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you all. Take care.
Okay, now we are going to hear number three. Jennifer Lane, thirty Sabino Farm Road.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing via Zoom remote participation on Monday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-seven P M. On the application of Jennifer Lane for a variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance twenty nineteen as amended section seven-two as it applies to the premises known as thirty Sabino Farm Road, Peabody, Mass., map fifty-two, Lot forty-three. Petitioner seeks a variance for an addition and requires relief to the right side yard where fifteen feet is required and five-point-two feet is proposed. Front yard where twenty feet is required and eighteen-point-nine feet is proposed. Property is located in our one A zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed by contacting Carl McGrath at carla dot McGrath at peabodymass dot gov or nine seven eight five three eight five seven nine two in advance and prior to public hearing. The agenda for this meeting and instructions on how to access the remote participation platform are posted on the City of Peabody website.
Okay, so we don't have Jennifer Lane or her representative, Andrew, listed. So if it's a telephone number on the screen, could you just, like, raise your... Oh, there it is. Is it nine seven eight three six zero seven one three seven one seven three? You have to unmute? If that's... If you're speaking on this? Unmute and let us know, please.
I did.
Okay.
I did.
Okay, so we can hear you now. I'm going to mute. Name and address for the record, and you can begin.
My name is Andrew Lane. I'm a resident of Peabody. I live at one Bowen Road, and I'm speaking to you on behalf of my daughter, Jennifer Lane, the petitioner who lives at thirty Sabino Farm Road. Our application is for the addition to provide more bedroom space that's much needed in that home. And the only way it can be done is to put the addition on the right-hand side of the building as proposed.
So it looks like you have a very odd-shaped lot. Is that correct?
That is correct. It's like a bowling alley.
Right. Questions by the board? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak for or against this? Nobody? I don't see anybody. At this point, the matter's before the board.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Move to approve.
Roll call vote.
Dan.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes.
Fran.
Yes, that has been approved. You'll hear from Carla tomorrow. Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Number four is Northeast Arms.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of Peabody will hold a public hearing via Zoom remote participation on Monday, December fourteenth, seven P M. On the application of Northeast Arms LLC Care of Attorney John Kelty, her variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance twenty nineteen is amended section seven-two as it applies to the premises known as one oh eight H, Newbury Street, Peabody, map sixty-eight, lots twelve and thirteen. Petitioner seeks a variance for a mobile range facility and requires relief to the left side yard where one hundred feet is required and seventy feet is proposed. Rear yard where fifty feet is required and twenty-eight feet is proposed. Property is located in a B R zoning district. The application and plan are available to the public and can be viewed by contacting Carl McGrath at carla dot McGrath at peabodymass dot gov or nine seven eight five three eight five seven nine two in advance and prior to public hearing. The agenda for this meeting and instructions on how to access the remote participation platform are posted on the City of Peabody website.
Thank you, Madam.
You're on.
Thank you. Can I be heard? Yeah. My name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at forty Lowell Street here in Peabody, Massachusetts. I am appearing on behalf of Northeast Arms LLC, who operate out of Unit H at one oh eight Newbury Street in Peabody, Mass. The property is owned by Rafina Inc. Property owners reside in Billerica, Mass. Once again, we are at one oh eight Newbury, and we have... Our structure is located on a three-point-five-acre parcel. We are seeking relief with respect to the rear yard as it faces residentially-zoned property. That's where we're requesting that we be seventy feet from the Huntington Woods boundary. And at our other boundary, which is with a commercially-zoned property, we are required to be fifty feet, and we're twenty-eight feet off. The proposal is for a mobile unit. It is... It looks identical to the sort of rear section of a tractor trailer. It's metal. It is forty-eight by... I'm sorry, yeah, forty-eight by... Forty by eight, forty by eight. So it's forty feet long. It supplies two shooting ranges, each roughly four feet wide. And this particular instrument is used for training of police departments, training of people at gun clubs, et cetera. Mostly, it'll be utilized by police departments. And in that capacity, it will remain mobile, can be removed from the site, taken to, for instance, a police department on the South Shore where training would be undertaken. There are safety training that takes place inside the unit while it is on the premises. And there is generally... The shooting range offers target practice and not only gun safety, but the opportunity to learn how to utilize a pistol that you may be interested in purchasing from Northeast. I've given you two plans, both prepared by Eastern Land Survey. One is the size of a plot plan because they're more easily filed. That shows the location being seventy feet and twenty-eight feet off of the property lines. But the second plan that was filed with you is the upper corner of an ALTA plan, which is much bigger, and we were not allowed to file paper copies of it or not encouraged to. So we show that the proposed mobile range facility, being forty by eight, is located on the concrete portion of our driveway and parking lot at the rear of the premises. And there were several residents of the Huntington Woods condominium that have reached out to my clients. They were concerned about noise. They have been given information on the construction of the unit, and it is soundproofed, extremely low decibel level is audible from the exterior. And we believe that none of that decibel level will be audible from off of our site and by the Huntington Woods Realty Trust folks. We also were asked to be sure that the range was located on the concrete portions and not the grassy area. That is, in fact, the case. That could not be ascertained from the plot plan that we filed. But on the second sheet, you can see that we are on the concrete portion and not interfering with the landscape, the areas. There was a concern that we were tearing down trees and removing trees in order to provide a place and space for this unit. That's not the case. The space for the unit is readily available out there on the parking lot, and we're happy to answer questions that you may have with respect to this application.
Jack, could you please talk about the use, the land use here?
The land use? The gunshot itself is... Is it what?
The acceptable use?
Yes, the building inspector... They've been open for several years now. The building commissioner had received a letter from... And the city council had received a letter from a city solicitor which cited various provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter one forty, saying that we were to be considered as a retail use, not requiring a special permit from the city council. There has never been a special permit granted by the city council. And although the city council did grant a junk dealer's license, if they were to handle any sales of any guns that were used, then they would require that junk dealer's license. They were given the opinion that there was no special permit needed back in two thousand and four, and they did issue the junk dealer's license.
So from what I gather and from what I've researched, this mobile unit is... There's no problem. No special permit is needed for this at all.
That's correct.
You're coming here for a variance because exactly...
Location.
Where you're placing it.
Location.
Okay. Are you finished?
I am.
Okay. So I went to talk to the owners of Northeast Arms and to look over the property. And from what I gather, where it's going to be placed in the back of the parking lot, I don't see at all... I don't see at all where it interferes with any part of Huntington Woods at all. And my main concern was that this unit was soundproof. And um, they, in speaking with them and them telling me where it is right now, it is completely soundproof. Because if it wasn't, it would not only affect Huntington Woods, it would affect Larrabee Terrace and it would affect me. Um, so at this point in time, uh, for the reasons why they want it, um, and the location, which I don't think is going to interfere, in my opinion, with anybody or anything, I think that um, it's, it's a good, it's a good proposal. I mean, it, it, it's going to serve a, a purpose that is needed. But um, we have lots and lots of people tonight that want to speak on this from uh, the audience. And I just want to reiterate, if in fact, the first 30 people have stated, whatever, please do not repeat that. You can get on, we'll allow everyone to get on. Say your name and address for the record. Tell me that you agree with everybody that spoke ahead of you. You'll still get on the record for opposing or being for it. But please, please be very careful. Listen to what everybody in front of you says and please don't repeat yourself. Because we have about 60 people ready to speak. Uh, before that, any questions at this point from the board or do you want to hear from the audience and then respond?
Through the chair before we start, if I could. Just a question through you to the attorney, Jack. Um, the only issue I have with this is I find it difficult to grant a variance to a mobile unit that can be moved around. You say it's, is it going to be on a permanent foundation when it's in back there? Are there going to be permanent steps constructed to gain entrance and exit? It just seems like, okay, this is where it's going to be today, but tomorrow I can't quite get it. I'm going to be 65 feet because I have to pull it up a little bit further today because there's really no place for this thing to sit. So just ease my mind and say that it's going to be some sort of permanent structure until they get to move it. Because it would be difficult to grant you relief when you really don't know where the thing's going to sit all the time.
We, we know exactly uh, where it will sit and we'll uh, have a pad created uh, for it, whi- which is which will actually be poured above the uh, above the existing parking lot. But there will be an absolute space for it. If we were to um, try to uh, have a discussion with the building commissioner about uh, the fact that it is so mobile and uh, that it would be, it will not be away more than it will be present. But we sort of trigger a discussion about whether we're one of those storage pods and we are not a storage pod. And so we do intend to have this uh, feature on the premises uh, more often than not. And yes, it will be, uh, there will be a specific location dedicated to it uh, and constructed uh, so that there will be none of um, moving it to different areas on the premises. When this is not out training uh, elsewhere, it'll be in this exact spot.
Okay, tha- that makes me feel better. Um, just, just one other question is, is um, so if it's eight feet wide, it's and, and it culminates two ranges, does, there can only be two people inside the trailer per time? Or will there be an area where your, your range is only 20 feet long and 20 feet is sort of behind the firing line, I guess? I don't know.
No, the only other people uh, that would be in the uh, facility would be the trainer.
Okay, alright. So everybody else would wait inside the um, Northeast Arms?
Retail store?
And then go out? Like, there wouldn't be people?
Yeah, it's by appointment.
Okay. Well, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
I have another question, Jack. Uh, are there going to be, well, of course there will be, uh, hours of operation? Has that been established yet?
Uh, they would be ordinary retail hours uh, similar to the store hours. But um, the use of this uh, training facility is uh, by appointment. And they would not be beyond or outside of the regular retail hours.
Okay.
Nobody up there shooting overnight.
Okay. Um, alright. Any, anybody else from the board? Alright.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Eddie.
Jack, if you would, uh, tell me if it's a mobile firing range and it needs to be on a foundation, talk to me about the utilities. And when it leaves, who's taking care of utility disconnecting and reconnecting? And I'm not sure I understand how a mobile unit can be that mobile if it needs to be on a foundation. I also know what the unit weighs.
I, uh, what I thought that I was uh, saying was that it would be on a slab. I was uh, envisioning and trying to describe a concrete slab laid over the bituminous parking area so that we are, and there were not utilities but for electrical.
Can I get to be here? So, so am I to?
I have no water. I have no plumbing.
Jack, am I to um, understand that the concrete slab also serves a purpose? So that is the only place that this unit will be?
That's correct.
Like its own little home?
Yes.
And what does the unit weigh, please?
Less than you.
I'm just, I, I do have a pamphlet on it and I'm not sure if it provides the weight, but let's look and see. It's 320 square feet, which is eight by 40 and it is... Actually, my pamphlet doesn't say what its weight is.
My concern is if it's a real firing range, of which I've been in a couple, but they weren't mobile. They were permanent at police stations uh, through the years in different states. Uh, I can't picture this being a trailer that's easily moved and my guess is it's going to be there more often than not.
Correct.
And I am concerned about, I'd like to have a lot of information on the unit because of the noise, because if you're really not going to hear people in there firing, then those walls got to be awful thick. And it's more of a permanent structure than anything. Because this guy doesn't think it's moving anywhere.
This guy being you?
I would need a lot more information if I was a voting member on the board here tonight before I could think of approving it, if I ever approved it.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Let's hear from the audience. First one?
Yeah.
978-857-0098. Unmute yourself and um, name and address for the record, please. Please unmute yourself, 978-857-0098. Okay, next. Mr. Taylor. Unmute yourself. There you go.
Oh, good evening. Um, couple of questions I had and I did not hear.
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, uh, Phil Taylor, 4401 Deerfield Circle. Couple of questions I had. I did not hear it in the presentation nor did I hear the chair wr- bring up um, any of it. But this is a request for a variance and I did not hear anything from the presentation for the board to consider that um, regarding the findings that the board must um, have in order to grant a variance. And I was hoping maybe the board could inquire to the applicant, what exactly is the basis for the variance under chapter 40A? And what is the, um, what, and what is he proposing satisfies those requirements for the board to consider?
Is that a question being directed to me, madam?
No, I'm, I'm going to read this from the application. So it is, property is an oddly shaped, especially oddly shaped lot, especially at the rear lot line. It has various angles at its border with the Huntington Wood condominium, which is a residential and uses triggers at 100 foot setback. Um, so the hardship would be that it, it, the back of that building is a very odd, oddly shaped lot. And where they have to put it, they need a variance for that. Does that um, answer part of your question?
No, it does not. There's a multiple, there's multiple criteria. And when you, when you mention oddly shaped lot, it's not that it's an oddly shaped lot. It's actually, it has to be oddly shaped with, with regard to the area around it. Um, I, I didn't hear anything about how it's, how it is vastly different from other lots around it. So what, nothing, I haven't heard anything about it being unique. You know, you, you mentioned the shape, um, but how do those things not affect the other land or structures in the general zoning area?
Okay, Jack.
And, and while I was going to answer, um, I didn't hear anything about, you know, financial hardship. I mean, this sounds like a desire, um, not a...
Madam Chair? We are not claiming any kind of financial hardship whatsoever. Uh, we are claiming that um, there is an irregularly shaped parcel of land and it is especially irregularly shaped at the rear of the premises. Uh, at the front of the premises, uh, we have a very straight uh, front, uh, front lot line uh, where it meets uh, US Route 1. We do extend uh, behind uh, one of our neighboring lots owned, shown on the plan is uh, land of Glassman and Stone. Uh, that um, sits in the middle of what would otherwise be a three-site, a rather rectangular lot on three sides. The rear lot line, however, uh, is, is uh, very unusually shaped. Even where we're placing the land, um, as the board probably heard and the applicant, where, um, where it's 28 feet from one of our lot lines and we're 100 feet uh, from the other. Not necessarily uh, because of the size of the lot, but because of the uh, irregularities with respect to the shape of the, of the rear lot line. And we would not place this unit in the front of the premises. In as much as we've already parking and aesthetically, I think the uh, unit itself uh, is uh, better served being in the rear of the premises.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Taylor?
Um, yeah, I just, again, uh, thank you for the information, but there was, well, there's information related to this lot. It's how this lot compares to the other lots in the zoning district. And what it, what I'm hearing is that all these lots have some odd shapes, the way they interconnect. But there also has to be a, a financial hardship issue with complying with the zoning. And attorney, excuse me, attorney Kelty um, indicated that there absolutely is no financial hardship. And actually, I'm not sure who said there isn't, but a little enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve a substantial hardship. So there's multiple criteria and I just haven't heard from the application that the criteria for a variance is met. And I hope the board would strictly comply with the requirements of chapter 40A with regard to a variance and deny the application.
Okay, thank you. Do we have somebody else that would like to speak? Ken Orth, please unmute yourself. Name and address for the record.
Yes, 4802 Heatherwood Lane uh, in Huntington Wood. Uh, simply saying I'm opposed to this for the same reason that was just proposed. And for the fact that this, these are strange units, I do not believe they've really been tested to have no sounds. And I am questioning whether it will be used only during um, the daylight hours, if you will, or the usual hours. Because I know how police uh, trains are. I know how other ranges are. Look at the hockey rinks that are run all night long uh, down Route 1 because they're just not available and there are not a lot of these available firing ranges available. And so I have a feeling it's going to get out of hand. So I'm opposed. Thank you.
Mr. Orth, we can condition the hours and they have to abide by that.
Okay, but I'm still opposed.
That's great. Thank you. Um, next, who would, who would like to speak next? Sue Turner. Unmute yourself, please, and name and address for the record.
Sure. Can you hear? Yes. My name is Sue Turner. I'm at 5006 Heatherwood Lane. Um, I am opposed to this variance and I would request that the board deny the application. I think that allowing the business, it's really a business expansion into the buffer zone, it's going to have an effect on our neighborhood. Uh, some interesting things that I've heard tonight is this might be a mobile unit moving in and out. And I've driven back there on more than one occasion as well. It's very difficult to see how a unit of that size is going to get in and out from behind there anyway, without creating a fair amount of racket. Um, I think that the noise, if it's going to be a semi or a permanent structure, Mr. Colbert asked questions about electricity. I have questions about lights and infrastructure. If it's a permanent structure as opposed, if going to become more of a permanent structure, I think we're on a slippery slope here where we have approving a variance for something that quote unquote is mobile. But we know that the variant, any variance granted can go to the next business owner. And that's not a good precedent to set in my mind. Um, I've lived in Huntington Wood since 86. I have a pretty healthy appreciation for the buffer zone because I've been through multiple of these hearings, as most of you have as well. Um, and I know what happens when the buffer zone is not respected, would be my word. So um, if this variance is approved, it has the potential to create and make worse some issues that the bill of the residents in Huntington Wood at that quarter already had. It will make them worse. And that's why I'm opposed to variance and I would ask that the board vote to deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Believe now we have Paul Tempesta.
Yes, thank you very much. Can you hear me? Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Paul Tempesta. I live at uh, 3002 Postgate Lane in Huntington Wood and I'm opposed and I agree with everybody who has spoken in opposition to this uh, as well. I, I, like others, question the soundproof um, of this. And I guess if there uh, is a door, obviously gaining entry into here, uh, all we need is uh, rounds being fired while the door, some person is coming in. Uh, the soundproofing now doesn't exist because now the door is open. People are, are, are shooting and the sounds are now coming out of the building. And now we're going to probably hear the building unless there is major coordination of shutting things uh, down or not, not. I think there's an opportunity for sounds coming out of there. Uh, people, it sounds like it's going to be a high-traffic area with um, uh, two lanes of uh, shoot, for shooting, uh, which my mind says that there'd be vehicles, motorcycles, trucks waiting for their turn to get in there. So um, I'm opposed to this and I would hope that the, uh, it would not pass. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see who's next. No? Wait a minute. Big Dog is next.
Hi. My name is Brian Alara and I live at 5002 Heatherwood Lane and I oppose this proposal. The reasons for this is I agree with Ed Colbert and other people who have had concerns about the noise level. I can tell you, I'm, I'm a, I'm a firearms owner and I, I am also a member of a gun club and I can tell you that a, that, that thing is not going to be soundproof. Also, another concern that hasn't been raised is that there's going to be lead contamination. Lead contamination is part and parcel of firing ranges. And if you don't have proper maintenance of the HEPA filters, then you're going to be having lead poisoning. And that, you know, being so close to a residential area is just problematic. So I'm opposed.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? Yep. Peg O'Meara?
Yes. Yes, my name is Peg O'Meara. I live at 2801 Post Gate Lane. I am also opposed. I won't reiterate a lot of what other folks have said. I will just say that we have 255 units here, many owners, probably 400 people, all of whom will be impacted in some way by this. We have a very significant investment in our homes and our properties here. And over the years, I've lived here since 1986. I'm an original owner. We have been through many of these hearings and we unfortunately feel that we've been ignored and in some instances and abused and others, the most probably recognizable one would be the East West Mortgage Building that was put up that caused us a great deal of, of heartburn. So when we see, you know, requests for variance, we, we see sometimes lots of promises made about how we won't be impacted and things will not be a problem for us. And as time passes, that proves many times not to be the case. So we, we feel we have to protect our property line, our buffer zone. It's, it's tantamount to what, what we have to do here. So again, I strongly oppose this and I know I'm joined by many of the 255 folks who live here who feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see if we have somebody else. Keith? Keith, you can unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want, everyone else has said basically what I wanted to say.
I need your name and address for the record.
Sorry, my name is Keith Farrar and I live at 3506 Woodbridge Road in PBD. And I want to just reiterate that I, that I'm opposed to, to this variance change. Everyone said basically what I want to say, except for, my concern is that if we give this variance, that other variances will be given to other people based on the fact that this will be precedent, precedent setting. And if that's the case, then it won't be just this one parcel that's been, that is down from 100 feet to 70 feet. Essentially across the board will be down to 70 feet. And I'd like not, as everyone has said before, we want to maintain our property values and the best way to do that is to maintain as much buffer that we can maintain. And the 100 feet that, that we have now, I, I think is appropriate.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. I just want to respond to that a tiny bit. I understand what everybody is saying. I understand and respect all your concerns and as does this entire board. However, make no mistake, this board takes every application individually, looks at everything that's, every part of it, and we vote all the time on distinct and different and various applications. So I would hate to think that you think because one variance goes through, the next one next door will. That's not the case. Everything is looked at individually. Thank you.
I appreciate that. What I'm saying is that, you know, one person will look at the other person getting the variance and they will, you know, they will say...
And, and, yeah, and I, and I get that. Doesn't mean that that second, third or fourth person would ever, you know, get it, but I, believe me, I do understand. I just had to make that point.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? We have Jeannie Gange. Unmute yourself, please.
Hi.
Name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Gange. I live at 3703 Woodbridge Road and I am opposed to this also. We have lived for the past three, four years there and we've had the construction going on behind us for the past year off to the side. There's been a living hell with the noise that wouldn't even be able to sit out. None of us have been able to sit on our patio and enjoy our yards. And now that that is coming to an end, the thought of listening to a firing range would just be unbearable and it would bring down our property values.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Paula Furlong. Unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? I live at 3904 Woodbridge Road at Huntington Wood. I'm a Realtor and I've sold quite a few units in here. And whenever I show one that backs up to Route 1, the people always ask several questions about what, what is behind there and what kind of a business is it? Is it noisy? Are there lights? Are there people talking? Are there cars? And the fact that there's going to be a shooting range there would scare them away totally. It would totally affect resale values. It would be a very scary thing to people. It's scary to me because my daughter lives in New Hampshire and they, I, they have a shooting range far from their house and you can hear it. So it's an outside range, but just that the fact that it's there will scare people. So I just wanted to say that that would affect values.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Phone, 617-710-5610. Unmute yourself. And name and address for the record.
This is Kathy O'Brien and I live at 2302 Pheasant Creek Lane. I also oppose this based on what everybody else says. I think that the buffer zone should be protected. So I'm not going to go through what everybody else said, but I oppose this as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Galaxy S9? Unmute yourself, Galaxy S9, if you would like to speak. Yep. Name and address for the record.
It's Dina Demazo, 601 Foxwood Circle. We're actually new owners here and we've been here almost a year. And I'm, I'm just going to reiterate what everybody else has said, that I'd be opposed to this decision.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? We, we have made note that we had in excess of 50 people. So, so it doesn't mean that you all need to speak, but just so you'll know, we, we have made note of that. 617-590-8829. Unmute yourself. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, this is Lou Lamontina. I'm at 3001 Post Gate Lane and yeah, I'm opposed to this idea completely. Relatively new residents here and one of the, you know, some of the reasons why we moved here was because of the, the peace and the tranquility and the, and, and, and the wildlife and things of that nature. And I just feel like, you know, a, a shooting range would disrupt all of that. It's impossible that there wouldn't be any noise. And, you know, and there wasn't any testing that's ever gone on to, to, to prove that it's soundproofed. So like I said, I mean, it just, you know, I, I'm opposed to the idea. In fact, quite frankly, I, I couldn't, I couldn't think of a worse idea, to be honest with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? 617-590... Oh no, we just heard that one. Oh, Michelle. Unmute yourself and name and address for the record.
Michelle Mancini, 804 Foxwood Circle, Huntington Woods. I'm also opposed for the reasons that were stated. I'm also a real estate agent and it's certainly an issue with showing property with what goes on up on Route 1, so I am opposed also.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Yes, we do. Terry Weber. Unmute yourself, please.
Hi, Terry Weber, 4201 Woodbridge Road, Huntington Woods. And just agreeing with everybody else, though, as far as the oppositions.
Thank you. Let's see. Ross Gordon. Unmute yourself, please, name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Patricia Reden Gordon and Ross Gordon from 3604 Woodbridge Road. We oppose the request for the variance for all the reasons noted. In addition to the fact that this would bring a concern for residential safety where, you know, this area of, of an active shooting range and asking for an exception to the buffer zone could bring potential active shooter situations to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Nick Magliano. Unmute yourself, please.
All right. Nicholas Maliano, 4803...
You, you need to turn off your, the other devices. And then unmute yourself again.
Mute, okay.
You can only have one device on. Let's try it again.
Okay. Ready? I had, I identified myself already. It's Nicholas Maliano, 4803 Heatherwood Lane. We are opposed. I'm just really uncomfortable with the insufficient guarantees of environmental pollution control, particularly lead and, and the associated chemicals coming from the shooting range. Add that to the property values and noise that's been spoken about, we are opposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Let's see. I don't see it. Call in user? Do we have a call in user? Nope. Okay. Let's see who's next. Kevin M.
Yes, hi, this is Kevin McKenna, 1501 Huckleberry Court. I am also opposed to this proposition and I do have a question for people that I don't believe has been brought up yet. In this unit, could you explain more about the electrical hookup? Is it from a generator or lines from the, from the business? Also, is there heating or cooling? Because in units like that on trucks, there's a generator that runs that also makes a lot of noise. If you could speak to that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, there is a heating and cooling unit and, which would be quite similar to the kind that is on a cargo truck. And the other question that you asked was very useful, too. You asked about the heating and cooling, oh, the electrical system. I think it can be done by the installation of a generator and then plugging into it. However, you could also, with the appropriate cord, you can run it off the electrical outlet at the building.
Okay, so there is the potential for excess noise from generators and units of heating and cooling units on top or a side of the vehicle, of the unit. So I think that's also a very significant issue and why this should be opposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alice Ryan?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. I live at 3901 Woodbridge Road and I am opposed to this variance and agree with all of my neighbors on what was stated previously. I've only lived here a few months and have loved this area, but I'm very concerned about the noise and environmental impact this could have on us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Call in user one. Did you want to speak now? It looks like you unmuted. Call in user one.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, my name is David Hosker, 2904 Post Gate Lane. Can someone from the legal team explain to me, one of the Massachusetts laws, section 12E, that says a discharge of a firearm within 500 feet of a dwelling or other building is basically illegal without the permission of the homeowners, whether it's inside or outside?
Jack?
I really don't have an answer for that. I don't, I'm not, I'm unfamiliar with the statute that...
I ask that you look into that, please, sir? Thank you.
Just through the chair real quick, just to address that. That, a call in user, that would be something that would be, had to be taken up with either local police or other local authorities as, I don't have the statute in front of me at this time, but that tends to revolve around illegal discharge or inappropriate discharge of a weapon, very different than somebody at a range like in Middleton or someplace like that. But we unfortunately as a board can't answer the question for you. It's a legal question, but you could always reach out to the PBD Police Department or another administrative part of the city and they can answer that better for you.
Right, exactly. And seriously, do some research on it. I think you're going to be quite surprised. Because Middleton, they had, they had to get approval from Richardson's Farm and a bunch of other things and there are no residents within a 500, 500 foot range.
Thank you. Before we go on, I just want to read it, I'm not going to read it, but for the record, Donna and Ray Valas. I, I do not have their address, but they have written and they also will go on record as opposition. Which you will be given to the clerk, Kyle McGrath. Do we have anybody else now? Alice Ryan, did you want to say something, dear?
Oh, hold on. No, I'm sorry, I forgot to lower the hand.
Okay, okay.
Apologize.
It's all right. Anybody else? Anybody? Yes. Galaxy S9, do you want to speak again or is this somebody new?
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Name and address for the record.
Yep, Ruth DeSoto, 606 Foxwood Circle. I'm also opposed to the variance for all the stated reasons.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else? One more, I think. It says Huntington Wood Home Owner? That says, that's what you're coming up as?
Yes, this is David Seki, 4402 Deerfield Circle.
Yes, this is David Seki, 4402 Deerfield Circle. My wife and I have been at Huntington Wood for 26 years now. And I just want to state that I'm opposed to the variance as well for all the same reasons that my neighbors have come up with. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? One minute? Okay. Jack, I'm going to hand this to you for a minute before we go on. Do you have anything to add or subtract or multiply?
I think that what I'd like to do is try to address many of the questions that the, both the neighbors and the board members have brought up. And I would ask that the matter be continued to the next meeting. And I would send a mailed package to the board members that you would have well before that meeting. And I would address issues such as the specs for the actual unit itself, height, weight. I would address the issue of cooling and heating systems, lead pollution. I do know there's a collection apparatus inside the trailer, but I could perhaps also, I'll provide you with that information, but at the same time, provide you with a plan about keeping lead away from the premises. One issue that I would like to, oh, and I would also provide more detail about the slab that I've described and whether or not, what the nature of any utilities would be. The parking lot for 108 Newbury Street was established and built before the buffers were created under our zoning ordinance. So we are, if you look at that second plan, that shows you that our parking lot and propane tanks are already closer to Huntington Wood. And the reason that that is the case, closer than we're going to be or hopeful to be, the reason that that is the case is that there were no buffers of the nature that they are today between residential and commercial. That being the case, today, that's why we're here asking for variances to use already impervious-surfaced land for this particular use. But I will give you some considerable detail on these specs that I've suggested I could come back with.
Okay, the matter's before the board. Continue.
I think it's a great idea.
Can I have a motion to continue?
Before we do that, through the chair, I just was curious. I think continuing is a great idea. I think getting some more information out to the neighbors and to our board is always a good idea. The only question I had is I didn't hear you just now. I did hear you mention it earlier in the presentation. But is there any kind of study or proof or additional detail that you can provide, Jack, as to the idea that this is going to be a soundproof?
Yes.
Because for me, that was really, the biggest issue and concern of the neighbors that raised my eyebrows was the noise factor. Not so much about what it was, because there's plenty of things on Route 1 in the near vicinity that maybe a Realtor wouldn't want to mention when they're trying to buy and sell, you know, the homes over there. So that wasn't swaying me one way or the other. But the noise, I do, you know, when we talk about noise pollution and things like that, that does, it is close to residential neighborhood. And I would want to hear a little bit more detail as to what you can offer us in terms of soundproofing.
Yes, and I'd be happy to do that. And that'll be included in the materials with respect to the specs with regard to this unit, how it is soundproofed and what emissions have been studied and are audible at the exterior.
You know, I was just thinking, Dean, that's great. And I agree with everything you said. I'm just thinking, if Attorney Kelty is going to get this great package to us, I'm wondering if there is a condo association manager or... Say it again?
Trustees.
But what I'm thinking is, Attorney Kelty, if you could get your package to somebody at Huntington Woods, so they could maybe look this over, too, if you think that's appropriate?
Yes, very much so. And that's how we do it, through the trustees.
Oh, you do it through, oh, so you were already going to do that? How silly of me to think that you weren't going to do that. Okay, that's why, I just wanted to make sure that they were all informed before, you know, before the next meeting.
Yep.
So now I need a motion to continue. Yes, Eddie?
Excuse me, if you don't mind, I can add something. I'd like to find out where the nearest mobile range is located and in operation now of the exact same unit that is proposed for this PBD site.
Okay.
And the information that I could talk to people at that location or where it actually is, because I would go visit it when it's in operation.
Okay. Jack, you got that right?
I did, I did. And I'd be happy to provide that.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to continue?
Motion to continue to our next meeting.
Which is January 25th?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to continue to January 25th. Do I have a second?
You do.
All a favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Huntington Woods, you will get some information from Attorney Kelty, and we will be back here to listen again on January 25th. You're not going to get anything in the mail from the building department saying that this will be heard again January 25th. So you all know it, you've all heard it. The agenda... The agenda and all the instructions of Zoom to get on to the meeting will be on the website. And if anybody else in beautiful Huntington Woods, and I mean that sincerely, I think it's beautiful. If you think they're interested to come back and listen on January 25th, please pass the word around. And if you have any questions at all, please call the building department and ask for my clerk, my second-hand, my wonderful, I mean, she's great, Carla McGrath, at 978-538-5792. Again, 978-538-5792. Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful holiday. We are now going to go on to number five.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the City of PBD will hold a public hearing via Zoom remote participation on Monday, December 14, 7:00 PM on the application of Eliferos in Espasia Gamaos care of Keith Carvalho for variance from the provision of the zoning ordinance 2019 as amended Section 72 as it applies to the premises known as 33 Linden Road, PBD, map 116, Lot 45. This petitioner seeks a variance or an addition and requires relief to the side yard, side yard setback.
I don't know who's on, but please get off.
And 9.5 feet is proposed. The property is located in our 1A zoning district. The application plans are available to the public and can be viewed by contacting Carla McGrath at carla.mgrath@pdmath.gov or 978-538-5792 in advance and prior to the public hearing. The agenda for this meeting and instructions on how to access the remote participation platform are posted on the City of PBD website.
Thank you. Okay, I believe Keith Carvallo, you're going to speak, but make sure only one device can be on. Otherwise, we don't hear a thing you're saying. So if you're ready, Keith, unmute. Yep, name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Keith Carvallo. I live at 101 Hill Street in Norton, Massachusetts. And I'm the contractor for both Eliferos and Espasia Gamaos. There is an existing addition on the house that is presently six feet off the side of the house, which they just, it's in need of, it's in disrepair and it's in need of fixing. And so while they were going to fix it, they also wanted to expand it. It's just going to extend forwards and backwards, no closure to the side lot lines. And it's just an expansion of the kitchen and a mudroom. And it's just going to be a wood frame, no foundation. It's going to be up on footings. And that's pretty much it.
Questions by the board? So you said she's going to expand the kitchen a bit?
Yeah, it's just to expand the kitchen. To an extent, they have an extremely small kitchen. And it's also a portion of, it's going to be for a mudroom, an entry into the house, in and out, which there already is, but they just want, they want to redo it.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I could.
Yep.
To the petitioner, do you know if the applicants have spoken with their neighbors? Because I was up there and there is a little bit of concern regarding, even though this seems like a very small addition, that they're having a hard time fitting their existing cars into the driveway, never mind taking away more land there, to the point where they have a van that doesn't even fit in and is parked in the street most of the time. And there is some concern from the neighbors that by adding this addition where it is, it'll decrease the amount of space they have for their own vehicles right now, which is a problem. Do you know if they've addressed it with the neighbors?
That I'm unaware of, if they've had any conversations with any of the neighbors. But I know that the van, but we're not going to be encroaching on the driveway any more than it already is. The other vehicles that they have are smaller in nature and they can fit down the driveway. The van, I'm not sure what the story with that is, or even whose it is.
Okay.
The homeowner is on, do you think we could...
Yeah, if you want to ask them.
Address it?
Sure.
Yeah, if you could. Well, before we do that, Mr. Carvallo?
Yes?
They noticed some markings, I guess, did they have a surveyor come up?
They did. So we have a certified plot...
That are sort of a foot or a couple of feet from where they think they should be. Could you address that, or what's the intention of those markings?
That you probably have to ask the homeowner, because the only thing that I was aware of is they did a plot plan to show where the addition was going to go. I'm not sure what those other markings would be. That you would have to address with the homeowner?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could, through the chair, to the homeowner?
You only have one system on at a time. Oh, Keith, do you want to mute yourself, please?
I sure will.
Could the homeowner unmute and maybe answer some of those questions? You can't have a TV on, you can't be watching this on TV and then speak.
If I could, through the chair, I don't know if really that, my concerns either entered the purview of this board, but there were some concerns when I was up there. So all I'm really trying to do is get some answers for the neighbors.
Looks like we lost the homeowner.
I don't think we're going to be able to do that, to be honest with you. And I, well, I won't say I won't vote on it, but I would be elected to until at least I can get some answers on a couple of questions. Thank you.
So, Barry, if I can understand this, did you say that you spoke to the neighbor and the neighbor was concerned about the parking? Well, I can't hear you. Unmute yourself.
That's correct, that's correct. In other words...
So I don't want to be rude or anything, but do you think that if it was that important, then the neighbor should be asking these questions?
Absolutely.
Oh, but the neighbor's not on tonight?
I, you know, I just don't want to say that because they talked to me, they figured that they would be addressed. But I agree. Okay. And looking at, to be honest with you, looking at the plans, I don't see where the addition's going to change an awful lot anyway, because it's already restricted right at that area where the stairs are right now. I guess it really doesn't matter.
Yeah, and I get it. And, you know, and I'm glad you did bring up some concerns of the neighbor. But I think that if it was that concerning to that neighbor, then she was, or he was very well aware that this was happening tonight and perhaps they should have logged on. But I'm glad that you did bring it up. I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Maybe we're jumping the gun. I don't know if there's anybody looking to talk any for the neighbors, but maybe they...
The homeowner's back and has the hand raised.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me now? Sorry. Hi, my name is Espasia Gamaos. I'm the owner at 33 Linden Road. Yes, we spoke with a few of our neighbors and they are, they are aware of the, what we want to do, the renovation of the home. And none of them have any problems, any issues with parking or anything that, you know, was mentioned earlier. So this is the first time we're hearing of this. So I don't think this will be an issue, because all we're doing is just replacing the building that was already there, because it's deteriorating. It's ready to fall apart. And we need to replace it because it's leaking and the floors are in a bad condition. So that needs to be replaced as soon as possible. So it's a hazard to leave it there and not be able to replace it. So that's why we want to do that. But in addition to that, since we're going to replace it, we also want to extend our kitchen, but we're still going to have the mudroom. So I don't see what it has to do with parking and the red van parked in front of my home. I don't think that's an issue.
And I guess, if I could, just one more question. And really, it's just, the markings, that's an indication that you're going to do anything else. This addition, you're gonna...
No, we, okay, the only reason we had to get a surveyor is to get the measurements, so we can apply for the, you know, we can apply for the permit to do the renovation of the home. That's the only reason we got a surveyor, for no other reason. That's the only reason.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I mean, since we're here. I guess it's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. I'm just curious when that structure was built. Because it just doesn't look like something that should have been built in the first place. But I do agree that the extension of it is not any, you know, I don't have a problem with giving them the relief based on the fact that they've already got what they have there. But I am a little bit curious as to why is it there in the first place? And when was it put there? If anybody knows? When was it put there? If anybody knows?
Hi, this is Espasia again, the owner, the homeowner. Yes, so when we purchased the home, so we were told by the real estate agent that that was there since it was built from the time that the home was built. So it was there. So when the home was built, that was added on to the home. That's my understanding. So it's always been there since we've owned the home.
And what year was that?
I think, when we purchased the home, it was 2006, I believe, 2007.
Okay. So, and that structure was already there. So prior to you buying the house?
Okay. So, and that structure was already there. So prior to you buying the house, it was still there?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? For anybody or anything? For anybody or anything. Matter is before the board.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call vote.
A motion to approve.
Roll call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Fran? Yes. You're, you have been approved. You'll hear from Carla, the zoning board clerk, um, tomorrow. Uh, thank you. There are no minutes to be approved this evening, my friends. Uh, our next meeting is January twenty fifth. Um, you will get Attorney Panos's huge package in the mail in a few days. And you might get another little special surprise in the mail in a few days. And with that, I want to thank you all. Have a wonderful Christmas. Safe and, uh, very prosperous and happy new year. You know I love you all, and sooner or later, we'll be together again in City Hall.
Can't wait.
I know you can't. I can't either. So, uh, that's it. Thank you very, very much.
Have a great holiday, everybody.
Happy holidays. Merry Christmas.
Everybody.